I'm like, um, it's nine oh two.
It'll be a little bit long.
Good morning. It is nine oh two. Thank you. I did track this one down, just so that we all know. Um, it's nine oh two. Let's call the July tenth, twenty twenty five State Board of Education meeting to order. Thank you. Um, will you join me in a moment of silence as we prepare our hearts and our minds for the meeting today? Thank you. Okay, before we get started, I do want to comment on the musical chairs that our board has played, um, because we have turned over and started a new season of leadership. And I just wanted to take a moment just to formally, um, say to my colleagues that I am deeply humbled by the faith that you have put in myself and Ms. Hunter. Well, bless you, because I have full faith in you. But I do just want you to know that I have deep respect and reverence for this chair. And so I feel very inadequate to fill the shoes, um, of my predecessors, because I've been led extremely well. Back in May, right after we had had the board meeting where y'all voted on this, my husband had a family reunion. And my husband's uncle was a forty-year educator for Rogers Public Schools. He was a science teacher. He's a Milken Award winner, like he is the cream of the crop. And so his opinion matters a lot to me. And he asked me, he goes, so what's your goal for your year as chair? And I smarted back to him and I said, to not make the paper? To put my nose down, put my nose down, do the work and serve out the rest of my term with as little fanfare as possible. Um, and obviously I don't control what ends up in the paper. So the serious answer to that is the one that I would, that I told to him later. And I said, when I started with the board, my goal is to leave the state of Arkansas, this board, and then just the system of education better than I found it. And obviously, I started in twenty twenty, so my hope is that the bar was low. Um, but only history will be the arbiter of whether or not I was able to be successful in that. And so I wanted to issue a charge today before we kind of get started. Just to all of us on this board to remember that this is a privilege that we get to have to sit in these seats, um, to hold these conversations that we do. And I would hope that we would be reminded as we are cultivating policies and voting on rules and sparring with one another and, you know, making decisions that are ultimately sometimes unpopular. That we would remember a quote that I heard one time, and I'll probably butcher it, but the sentiments are that it is the primary obligation of leadership to protect the future. And for us, that takes a lot of different forms. And so I just pray that we kind of move forward with humility, but also boldly, and that we will be found faithful in that task. So, anything from you?
No.
Okay. Well, with that, yes, please.
I can't help myself at just, if one of your goals is not to make the paper, you might want to move. Because if you're sitting next to me, you're in good company to make the paper. But I, I will say, and I, and I maybe speak on behalf of the board, but kind of all of our entire educational community and family out there, we have confidence in you. And this board wouldn't have chosen you to be our chair if they didn't believe in you. And that charge of making sure that we are improving conditions for students to be successful is something I think we can all embrace with open arms. And I, I love, uh, the sentiment that leadership is to protect the future, because that's, that's what's important. When we look at all the investments that we've made over at least kind of in my tenure, and, and you were serving long before I got here around improving a system that's going to get, um, students ready to be enlisted, enrolled, or employed. I think every single day we strive more towards reaching that goal. And I'm confident we're going to continue to accelerate that and do it even, uh, better, bigger and bolder under your tenure and leadership. So welcome aboard, we're really glad to have you.
Thank you. All right. Well, with that, it is my esteemed privilege to get to introduce to you Mr. Dallas Cathy. He is a student at the School for the Deaf and Blind. And he was actually a guest broadcaster for the Little Rock Trojans baseball team, because his dream is to be a broadcaster. And so we wanted to kick off this meeting and allow him to sort of introduce our board members. So, Dallas?
Testin, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
All right. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I am Dallas Cathy, a student at Arkansas School for the Deaf and Blind. Welcome to the July tenth, twenty twenty five State Board of Education meeting. In, in this first meeting of twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six school year, it is my pleasure to introduce to, uh, state board members, State Board of Education members. Sitting in the middle of the dais are the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six board officers. Please stand or wave when I call your name. Adrian Woods, attorney and business owner, was unanimously elected at the April tenth board meeting to serve as chair in the twenty twenty, in twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six. Ms. Woods and her family live in Bentonville. Sitting to the left of Ms. Woods and serving as vice chair for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year is Lisa Hunter, a banker who resides with her family in Whitehall. In April, Ms. Hunter was also unanimously elected to this position. On Ms. Woods' right is Secretary of Education Jacob Oliva, the state's educational leader, who serves as board secretary after being appointed by Governor Sanders to serve as the Arkansas Secretary of Education. Mr. Oliva was unanimously approved by the State Board of Education to serve as commissioner, which comes with the position of board secretary. Also on the dais is Randy Henderson, a State Board of Education member who is a native of Blytheville. Mr. Henderson works with New Core Steel, serves on the Arkansas Workforce Development Board, and is known across the state for supporting CTE initiative. State Board of Education member Jeff Wood is an attorney from Little Rock who previously served on both the Little Rock School District com- Community Advisory Board and District School Board. Now serving on the State Board of Education is Ken Bragg, previously served as state representative for ten years. Now retired, Mr. Bragg and his wife reside in Sheridan. But you may have seen him at the Capitol during the twenty twenty five legislative session. State Board of Education member Lee Keener is passionate about education of young children and serves as a chair of State Board Committee on early learning. She and her family live in Little Rock. With a career in educational leadership, Gary Arnold spent more than fifteen years leading an independent school in central Arkansas and has had many articles published on leadership and the educational landscape. Also, sitting on the dais this morning is the twenty twenty five Arkansas Teacher of the Year, Jeanne Wilcoxen. This is the first member, this is the first member of her, first meeting of her year-long service as a non-voting member on state board. And Ms. Wilcoxen comes from Chanel Elementary School in Pulaski County Special School District. She taught math, she taught math, and her students consistently ranked in the top three percent on standardized tests. This is the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six Arkansas State Board Education of, of education.
Hey, now, can you, Dallas, stay up here. I think the rest of us would like to get a picture with you.
Well, can we ask Dallas some questions?
Yes.
I don't know if any board members have any.
So I did want to point out, I was told that he is a baseball enthusiast and that he, um, basically experiences baseball through sound. So, and for those that are on Zoom that couldn't see him, he was reading that entire prompt through Braille. So, super impressive.
Dallas, that, that was amazing. Thank you for being here today and for all your kind words for all of us. Tell us a little bit about your experience at the UALR baseball game. I want to hear more about that.
It was great. I, I really enjoyed it, you know? Listening to the, to all the sounds, listening to the crowd, everybody there, having my partner Max Coltrane with me there announcing. I really enjoyed it, you know? We both worked good together as a team, and in the press box, it was great. Especially the inning breaks, you know, we would, we, we would all laugh and talk and have fun.
You've got a, you've got a great voice. It sounds wonderful for, for broadcasting. I, I wish you all the best, bud.
Well, thank you so much. And thank y'all for inviting me out. Couldn't have done it without all of y'all. And thank everyone of y'all for letting me come out here.
Well, and I recently saw you on the news on both Fox sixteen and Channel Four. Tell us about that experience.
Well, I tell you, it was a little nerve-wracking at first. Kind of stressful, but I got through it. And, yeah, I got, I got through it, read the prompt. It was great. I, I, I enjoyed working with Mr. Ernie Paulson, greatest man I could have ever worked with.
Well, you did a wonderful job. Thank you for coming today.
Well, thank y'all for inviting me.
What's your hometown, Dallas?
Um, I'm out of Warren, Arkansas. About a hundred miles south of here.
Yeah.
Dallas, this is Jacob. What grade are you in?
I am going to be a junior this year.
And so what are your plans after high school?
My plans after high school is I plan to go to Eulera for college and get a sports broadcasting degree.
So if, if sports broadcasting is in your future, we, we may hire you to be our official hype man at the state board. And we can start every year or every meeting like this, because that's such a wonderful kickoff to our new, because thi- this is our first meeting in a new school calendar year. So what, what a wonderful way to kick us off. Thank you.
Well, thank y'all.
And I want to compliment, you have quite the cheering section behind you, even following along with every word. So, uh, we should all be so lucky.
I, I, I do, and I thank all of them for being behind me and supporting me and rooting me on. All the people that have rooted me on, I thank every one of them.
That's great.
Thank my lucky stars.
Can we do a picture with him just right here? Yeah, pull him over. Yes, he did really good. We all, I mean, I can come up with a walkout song if you want to do it next time. We can all have a walkout song. Are you next? I think you're next. All right. So our next recognition is actually going to be presented by our own Ms. Lee Keener.
Good morning. Thank you so much. Um, Rachel, you want to join us up here? It is my pleasure to introduce to you Rachel Parker. She is the visionary leader of Ferncliff Nature School. It is the first licensed preschool of its kind in Arkansas. Under her guidance, Ferncliff Nature School, Nature Preschool, has pioneered an innovative approach to early childhood education, where preschoolers spend around eighty percent of their day outdoors. Through engaging activities like nature walks, interactions with farm animals, constructing natural structures, and creating art with natural materials, Ms. Rachel fosters a deep connection between young learners and the world around them. Her exceptional dedication to environmental education was recognized when she was named the two thousand twenty four Arkansas Environmental Education Association's Outstanding Formal Environmental Educator. That is a mouthful, but you deserve every word. Director Parker's leadership continues to set a transformative standard for early care and education in Arkansas, inspiring both students and educators alike. Dr. Jordan Peterson tells us, if you're gonna make kids tough, which they better be if they're gonna survive in the world, you can't interfere when they're doing dangerous things carefully. And the Reggio Emilia style tells us that the environment is the third teacher, behind only the family and the teacher, the classroom teacher. Oh, shoot, I got on my page, hang on. In establishing Ferncliff, you are the living embodiment of both of these two ideas. Now, for the fun part, I got some quotes from those that know her much, well, much better than I do. One from a colleague, I began working with Ms. Rachel in her quest to be part of the state's quality rating improvement system. Her motive was to make her program available to all families. We met routinely with a focus on her role as director. Over time, we became a cohort of two, me supporting her growth and program management, and her teaching me all about the advantages of outdoor learning environments. Rachel has created something very special at Ferncliff Nature Preschool, and I'm proud to have played the part of cheerleader in her recent years. Now, from a family that has had two children go through her program, Rachel Parker is a world-class program director, setting a bar few others can match. Having trusted her and her program with two of our children, she is kind and genuine towards all she encounters and has a true passion for growing young people and their love of natural spaces. She is an innovator and a trailblazer, and has been a wonderful person to get to know professionally and personally. We appreciate all the hard work and contribution she has done, not only for us families at Ferncliff, but for education programs across the state and beyond. And most importantly, a quote from a recent student, I believe she's six, she was the best teacher because she's nice to us, kind and loving, and helped us. You get a full thumbs up. Thank you for letting me introduce Ms. Rachel.
That's wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you to the, to the, uh, board. I'm out of my element. I'm used to being in the woods, playing in the mud. So this is, uh, very different for me to be standing in front of all of y'all. But, uh, I want to say thank you to Lee, uh, for, I think, putting me up for this recognition with the board. Uh, thank you to the board for recognizing this work, um, and to my colleagues who have helped make this happen over the years. I got emotional, I didn't, I had not heard those quotes. Um, and it, I just feel really honored, um, to have support from our community, uh, to do this. That third teacher part is so important. Arkansas has such a dynamic environment to teach children in, because we are the natural state. And so doing this work with three to five-year-olds and even beyond, I'm so excited to hear about the governor's pilot program with K through twelve, uh, environmental education. And I just feel so honored to be on the forefront of that, working with our youngest, uh, learners in this program. Um, and so it's just, it's my life's work, and I just hope to help continue that and to help the state, uh, you know, bring nature-based education, uh, to as many students as we can. So thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, does anybody have questions?
I'll ask a question. So you just mentioned the term "nature-based education." How did that vision come about? What, what was that calling? And what, what led you to say, I'm going to create an environment that's transformative and innovative in making sure kids are, um, well-prepared for kindergarten in an environment that's not sitting behind a desk and in front of a tablet?
Yeah, so I'm a special education teacher by background. I was trained at the University of Central Arkansas, right here, right in, in our wonderful state. Um, and I was in an environment that felt, um, pretty rigid, and there wasn't a lot of creativity maybe in the classroom. And so I started to get my students out. Uh, we developed a garden, uh, program, got our youngest learners outside and started seeing the learning that came from that. And so then that sparked in me, you know, a desire to find more professional development opportunities regarding nature-based education. And so as I began to look, I found this model of almost fully immersed, uh, education for, uh, birth, you know, pretty much birth to five. Um, there's many, you know, different models out there, but the specific one was a forest kindergarten-type model, and kids were out in the mud, in the woods, and they were just living their best lives. And so in seeing that, that in me just made complete sense. Like, I think this is how I was meant to teach and where I'm my best version of myself. So I imagine children are their best versions of theirselves in that environment. And so I just started working for a couple of years to make that happen and was connected to Ferncliff, who saw that vision as a camp program. They already knew about risky play for children and getting kids outside and the value of that. And so then when we met, it was like a match made in heaven, you know? And so that's really where this vision came from, and then they've helped me develop that from there, so.
Risky play, there's an expression for it. It's coming back, and it's coming back strong. Well done.
I might suggest a, a board field trip, maybe, one day, to go do some risky play out in the woods.
Please. Come out to visit us anytime. I'd love to, to show you what we're doing out there. Yes. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you for all your work. Do you have a picture? All right.
Hearing none, motion passes. So the third motion would be based on the rationale to adopt the PLSB rationale for...
There are two rationales in this case, one from the Ethics Subcommittee and one from the Ethics Hearing Subcommittee. They are fairly similar.
I'll move to adopt the rationale. Motion made by myself, Ms. Woods. Seconded by Ms. Hunter, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion passes.
Just to clarify, is that the rationale of the Ethics Hearing Subcommittee or the Ethics Subcommittee?
I'm comfortable with the one of the hearing.
Yes ma'am. I've got it.
That works for you?
Okay. Thank you.
Alright. If there's no additional business, then I would say... Alright, is there any new business that we need to discuss? No? Alright. Then moving on to consent. Is there any items that need to be pulled from consent to the action item for next month?
I would move to pull item number fifteen.
Okay.
Regarding the PLSB, case twenty-five dash oh-nine-four.
Okay. Any others? From anybody else? No? Okay. Then item... Do you have something to say?
Please. We just need the rationale.
The rationale?
Yes sir.
Uh, being to review the underlying facts of the case and the decision by the PLSB for a three-month probation.
Yes sir, thank you. Thank you. Alright, then we will move that. Then I need a motion to accept the consent agenda in the second.
So, uh, move to accept the consent agenda with the exception of item fifteen.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Hunter, seconded by Ms. Keener, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. And on that, we've made it to board reports. Do we want to take like a five-minute break just to allow the court reporter to grab her stuff? Okay. We won't be back here at like nine forty-seven. How about that? Oh, there we go. Alright, let's call back to order. Thanks. Alright, are there any board reports? Lee, any updates?
Not yet.
No? Okay. Excellent. Okay. Well then, Ms. Will Coxon, welcome to the board. We're so excited to have you for this next year.
I can't help it. Every time I see Ms. Will Coxon, I just remember an entire cafeteria full of kindergarten through fifth graders going, "Ms. Will Coxon." So we always gotta pump her up.
Should we do that?
Yeah, every time she does her report, we can just pump her up.
We're excited for your report.
Okay, I gotta figure this clicker out.
Go for it.
How this works, so. First, I just wanna say thank you, good morning to everyone for welcoming me today to my first official board meeting. This is definitely a different role than I've played for the past twenty-five years, standing in front of little, you know, kids teaching, and so I look forward to this opportunity, working with all of you, learning from all of you, and as well as the learning experience that this year will bring for me. So, I haven't, since I started my service on July one, I haven't had the opportunity to participate in many activities thus far. Um, but I do wanna share with you just a little bit about me, my family, my classroom, my students, which is of course where my passion has been for the past twenty-five years. And then just some upcoming things and goals that, um, I have in mind so far for my year of service. So.
Oh, there we go.
Okay. So, a little bit about me, um, I began my teaching career in nineteen ninety-nine where, um, I graduated from the U of A at Monticello. A lot of people do not know, but my original plan was to be a PE teacher. And for twenty-five years, I've never been a PE teacher in my life. Um, I did get the opportunity to coach, uh, our junior varsity volleyball coach at Robinson High School for six years, and that's pretty much the only time I've used that degree. So, shortly after I graduated, I moved to Louisiana. My husband's job was there, and so I began my teaching career in Louisiana. And while there, I could not find a PE job in my degree, and so I decided to go back to school, to LSU, and I took night classes. And earned, uh, or received my certification for the classroom for pre-K four. And that's where I've been teaching ever since. I, after ten years of teaching Louisiana, we moved back, um, to Arkansas. My husband had an opportunity to transfer, and um, we had had some recent losses in our family, and we were wanting to relocate back to Arkansas to be closer to our families. And so I did teach in Dumas, Arkansas, which is where I am from. And I was born and raised in Dumas, grew up there, attended public school there, K-12. And I taught there for one year, and then after that year was over, we, uh, finally got to move to Little Rock. And I began my teaching career at Chanel Elementary School in two thousand and ten, and I've been there ever since. And primarily, I've been teaching math and science, mainly math. I've had a few years where I was teaching science at Chanel. But, um, and I've had a tremendous amount of success there, and, um, just love my Chanel family. So, this is my family. They are my life. Everything we do, we do as a family. Um, you can see my husband, Brian, and then my two daughters, Sydney and Emma. Sydney graduated college, she's graduated college, and, um, she starts dental hygiene school at UAMS in August. And then my youngest, Emma, is attending the U of A at Fayetteville, pursuing a nursing degree. And then, of course, I had to include our dog Kane, our German Shepherd. He doesn't realize he's a dog. I think he thinks he's a human. Um, and so, we live here, of course, in Little Rock, and like I said, I was born and raised in Dumas, down in the Delta. And so I wanted just to kinda show you a little bit of my journey so far as Arkansas Teacher of the Year. Um, back in August, I visit, I was invited to attend the Governor's Mansion Banquet. And there, I was recognized as a state, or the first as a regional, um, finalist. And then on that same day, I was recognized as a state semifinalist. So that was a really exciting day. I was super nervous looking back and but, um, it was such a rewarding experience, and just to know that I was selected out of so many amazing educators across our state means the world to me. And then, um, this day was absolutely amazing. So this was the day that I was announced as Arkansas Teacher of the Year. It was also special because it was my daughter's birthday. Um, and it was a complete surprise. So my principal had scheduled a bus safety assembly. And I remember that morning, I was just a fussing because I had, it was a Friday, I had my assessments planned for the week, and if you know me, I'm that teacher who does not like my classroom to be interrupted, you know, for things unless it's absolutely necessary, because if you know anything about elementary education, every minute counts. I mean, every second counts. And so for me, you know, I was like, why, you know, why are we doing this on a Friday in the middle of the morning, you know, during my assessment? And I was just a fussing, and so I was, I happened to hear a colleague of mine, a fifth grade teacher, walk down the hall, and he's like, "There's news people all over." And I'm looking and going, thinking, "What in the world did we get in the news?" You know, I was like, "Why are all these news people here?" And then it dawned on me, I was like, "It's today the day." And so I tried to call my husband. Well, he answered and said that he was off. He travels the state, um, for work. And so he was, played off this story that he was going out of town for work, and he'd be back later. And so then I tried to call my mom, and I couldn't get in touch with her, and so I was starting to kinda panic, and um, and I thought, you know, my principal knows how much of a family person I am, and I'm like, she would never not let my family know something was going on, and surely they would have told me if they knew something, but that was not the case. So, eventually they called us all down to the assembly, and of course, I was the last class to enter. And when I walked in, you know, there was just tons of people there, and everybody was just kinda looking at me funny, and I was like, "I think today's the day." And so that's when it initially like set in. But then I couldn't see my husband or my mom, and my girls, you know, they were out of town, and they were like, "We can't come home because, you know, we, you'd be asking tons of questions, like, why aren't you at school?" And, you know, and all those things, and so unfortunately, they didn't make it, but um, my principal had hid my husband and my mom in her office. They were at the school, and I had no idea. And so I walk in, they snuck them up behind me, and on the bottom left picture, you can see my husband giving me a big hug, and um, they were sitting behind me the whole time, and I had no idea that they were even there behind me, but this day was such, so amazing. I mean, my kids were so excited. And, I mean, at the end of the day, it's all about them. I mean, you know, my success story revolves around them and all their hard work, and as well as all the people in our school community, from admin all the way down to the cafeteria workers. You know, it takes a huge team to make teachers successful in the classroom, but this day was absolutely amazing and so special. So I just kinda wanted to give you just a little walk inside my classroom, just to kinda show you the kinda teacher that I am. So, as you can see, just from a few of these pictures, and there are so many to choose from. I had a hard time picking the ones to share today, but it's my hopes that this year that I can travel the state and share some of my experiences and strategies and things that have made my students successful in math. And I'm not saying I have all the answers, but, you know, I would love to share some of my expertise, because I think a lot of the things that I do make a big difference in my kids' success. And so you can see it's, you know, I'm really rich in academic vocabulary and using diagrams and anchor charts that I leave up all year long for my kids. We do a lot of project-based learning, um, using highlighters and models to show kids the concepts. You know, I'm a, I'm a firm believer in them seeing the big picture of it all, and so in being able to make, make connections and um, just starting and doing activities like this, and then we build upon those. Um, this is just a little glimpse in science. I've primarily taught math, but this year, we had only two classes, and so I taught science as well. And so this is just a few pictures of my kids with a lot of the projects and activities, um, experiments that we've done this year in science. One I wanted to kinda talk about was our fishing derby. So we have a pond at our school, and no one has ever thought there was fish in it, and so for years, I've been taking my fourth graders, and we, and we have a deck and can have like an outdoor classroom with it as well, but we um, arranged this fishing day, and I invite, um, grandparents and dads to come and help with that day, and they help the kids fish, and, um, it's amazing how many fourth graders at Chanel Elementary have never fished today in their life or caught a fish. And so this is always a special day, and we partner with the community to, um, like, provide donations and have just a, just a big food, food. They, they come out and cook, and, I mean, it's just an amazing day for the kids. They told me this year, um, so when COVID hit, we couldn't do this anymore, and so this was the first year that we actually, that I brought it back this year. And my kids tell me at the end of the day, they're like, "We don't ever wanna go on a field trip anymore. We just want to go fishing." So, um, that was a really eye-opener. So even this year, during my year of service, I hope to go back and, and continue this. And hopefully not just do it with the fourth graders. I would like to do it with, you know, some other grade levels at Chanel to give them that same experience, so. And so in, um, February, this was like my first big step in my journey. I had the journey to, um, and the opportunity to travel to Santa Clara, California, um, where I got to meet my cohort of teachers. And if you're not sure what that is, so that's all the teachers from around the nation, um, who were Teachers of the Year for their state. And so I got to meet fifty-five other amazing educators. We attended, uh, multiple PD sessions. We even got to attend the Google campus, which is absolutely amazing. And the picture on the far left is Missy Testerman. She was the twenty-twenty-four National Teacher of the Year, so I got to visit and talk with her. But it's been absolutely incredible to join a cohort of teachers who have the vast experience in education and, and, you know, and to hear so many different ideas and wonderful things that they're doing in their states. Um, we talk almost daily, and so this has been an incredible support system. Um, and I look forward to meeting them again real soon. So some upcoming events, uh, I'll be traveling to Space Camp next week in Huntsville, Alabama, and then Washington Week in Washington, DC is coming up at the end of September, along with the Governor's Mansion Banquet, which will honor the, this year's recipients. And then the Arkansas Travelers game, and so I remember last year being at that, and Bo, the former Arkansas Teacher of the Year, had to throw the first pitch of the game, and so I told my husband, I said, "You know, I might oughta get my hands on a baseball and start warming up in the backyard." So, I look forward to these events that have already been scheduled. And then these, they're just some of the goals, as, you know, I've been reflecting and thinking about some of the things that I would like to do across the state. Of course, you know, looking back at my success story with uh, math, you know, my students have performed very well on the state test, and so, you know, my main goal is how can I help others achieve that same goal? And so when I look, you know, I look forward to being able to travel to different schools and working, you know, with other educators and hoping that I can make a difference in that area. Um, serving as an advocate for teachers and students, you know, talking with the board and the State Department about issues and things, you know, concerns that elementary teachers face in the classrooms, you know, because, you know, not everyone always knows those things. So having a voice for them and being able to try to help, um, teachers and students alike across the state is important to me. So, leading professional developments is another one on there, and so I look forward to, yeah, getting started and see how this journey plays out. I know, I'm looking forward to being probably the most unforgettable years in my career, so I'm excited to be here, and thank you all.
You got us the cream of the crop. Thank you so much for being here. We're really excited.
Yeah, for, for those of you that don't know, Chanel Elementary might be the second-best elementary school in, in Little Rock. It's a very, very good school. Obviously, I'm kidding. My kids went to Roberts Elementary School.
Just a little rivalry there.
But Chanel is fantastic, and every parent that I've talked to whose kids went through there uh, loved their kid's experience at Chanel, so you come from a fantastic place. These people are probably gonna make, you listed a few of the things, some of the fun things. They're also gonna make you do some other not-so-fun things, like you might have to go to the College Football National Championship game, something like that. If you need somebody to step in for you for that, I'm, I'm willing to carry that.
Take one of these.
Carry that water for you.
Can you talk to us about Atlas?
Well, I'll also just wanna formally show our appreciation for Ms. Will Coxon and thank her for the board, and you survived your first update. You did a wonderful job. And if, if you do get asked to throw out the first pitch at a baseball game, and wanna throw it underhand and roll it like a bowling ball, I got you. I can help you out with that. And nobody will judge. It's all okay. But in all honesty, I, I've been actually pretty fortunate to be in our classroom a few times, and when I tell you that Ms. Will Coxon is a master educator, you can sense it from the second you walk in the door, that, um, these students are listening to every word she has to say, and is taking it to heart, and she prepares them to not just be ready for the next grade, but to have a love for math that they will carry with them for the rest of their lives. And, um, one day, we, we need to bring everybody in there to watch, watch a true master teacher at her craft, because Ms. Will Coxon is definitely that. And, um, I'm gonna talk a little bit about some of our data and how we wanna build out math paths and acceleration, and I was like, "Guess what? We gotta add some more bullets to that list, 'cause we got some work for you to do." But welcome aboard, so thank you.
So.
Yep, please, enlighten us.
So what I, what I'd like to do is spend a little bit of time in, in the report, I might ask for the clicker. Or Kim's gonna grab that real quick. Just kinda give, uh, summer update, if that, uh, is okay with some members of the board, just kinda give a, a little state of the state. It, it's kinda funny, 'cause a lot of people that don't work in schools may or may not realize that the summer is probably busier in a lot of schools with administrators than during the school year, because there's a lot of planning, a lot of ordering, a lot of professional development, mapping out bus routes, figuring out classes, and it's just a bustling time, so we're really fortunate that, um, we've been able to, as an agency, stay engaged with our superintendents and our leaders and, um, and, and everybody out there working on the work to make sure that when our school doors open in August, we're ready and welcoming for our young scholars to learn. Well, part of that is, is we wanna make sure we know whether or not our students are learning what we want them to learn, and how do we know how well they're doing? So, I wanna kinda take a, a step back and, and remind you that we've been on a, a journey of alignment for about the last two and a half years, and, and we started with Arkansas Learns, saying, "We wanna make sure that the system is aligned." Right? We wanna have clear and concise expectations for teachers, students, and parents to know what we want students to learn in each and every grade level. We wanna develop a unified coordinated progress monitoring system to monitor the performance of those students. And then ultimately, have an assessment whose test items reflect the standards that we see in our progress monitoring. And we made a big transition, this board, uh, most of you have been on this board throughout that transition, from updating standards, adopting new assessments, adopting new cut scores, linking equal percentiles from ACT Aspire to Atlas to try to get some kinda definition of how are our students performing. So this is, uh, an exciting time, because last spring, we gave year two of the Atlas assessment. So if you go back the prior year, I guess that'd be the twenty-four administration. That was our first year, and that was our baseline year. And once we got that assessment, we had to pull a bunch of teachers and leaders all across the state to kinda rewrite new definitions of, what does a level one mean? What does a level two mean? What does proficiency mean? What does advanced mean? And getting that data back to school was severely lagging. I wanna say it, it went into almost December, um, by the time schools were able to get that data. But we know getting individual student reports is important, and is it a priority for those leaders that are making decisions on placements and professional development and intervention, acceleration, what are those opportunities for students? So we've made a commitment that as the system is getting built, we wanna turn around this data a lot faster, and I, I wanna, I see, um, Hope, uh, Warsham, and Michelle Johnson out there. Those two have been working night and day for about two years to get this vision to come alive, because this is a big deal, I think, for the state, 'cause this is some very valuable information and tools that are gonna help our teachers make the right instructional decisions around the practices and lessons that are gonna best benefit the student. So, today, we're able to- So today, we're able to release individual student results from last spring's assessment on ELA math and science. And um if you remember, pretty much those are our tested grade levels, grades three through ten, our end of course exams for algebra, geometry, and biology. So getting that out the school districts before October was a really big deal. So we're really excited to announce today that um parents, teachers, leaders, will be able to see individual student results. And then I'm gonna talk about the timeline a little bit for next steps. As the system is being built and getting more efficient, our anticipation is by next year, at the close of the assessment window. Results will be back turned around within a week. So we feel like beginning of June, maybe even as much as the end of May, we're gonna be able to turn these results around. So the system takes a little bit of time to get built, but we have, we have really um done a lot to make sure that we're putting everything. Into practice to get things done the right way. So I want to remind the board that we wrote these new definitions of what is level one, what is level two, what is level three, and what is level four? And we wanted to make sure they were aligned with what we saw with some national assessment data. Uh most of us, we remember, I've done some reports on Nate's scores. And when we look at defining proficiency, meaning that that student has a a strong understanding of the knowledge and skills and mastery of the course and content at the grade level. We set a high bar and that's at level three. And level four would be so a student that has advanced understanding. But then we also have um a basic understanding, which means students are able to demonstrate mastery on some of that content, but they're not quite at that proficient independent level. They may need some reminders. They may need some additional support. And a level one is a student that really demonstrates limited understanding of what's happening. And we know they're gonna need strong intervention and support to fill in those holes. So when we developed last year, we set that baseline, we set a high bar for what it meant to be proficient. And that was the right thing to do and that took a lot of courage by this board. We saw nationally, other states lower their definition of proficiencies to try to make it sound like their students are doing better than what they really are. But we're not gonna be dishonest. We're not gonna lie to students and families. And we want to say if a student is demonstrating a proficient level, that means their likelihood of being successful at the next grade level with a lot of intervention and support is really high. And that when they graduate from high school, they're gonna be on a path to be enlisted, enrolled, or employed. So this is a big deal when we can say we're moving the number, the number and the metrics in that space. So I'm gonna give you a little bit of high level data, if that sounds good, unless there's any questions on um what we're seeing nationally in some of our trends. So this slide shows in green the twenty twenty four students in um the three content areas of ELA math and science. And then in the blue bar, you'll see the twenty five data. And so when we say ELA aggregated, basically that's all the students in grades three through ten that took the ELA assessment. And that's the assessment that we use that goes into school grades and that will go into our district grades and how we in inform schools and school districts of how their students are overall performing. In math, that is grades three through eight primarily, and that also includes algebra and geometry scores. And then in science, it's grades three through eight and also includes biology scores. Now, when you see that ELA had a zero point eight percent increase from this year over last year. I think a little bit more significant, a two point seven percent increase in math and science. Just remember that is the percentage of students meeting that threshold of proficiency. Meaning the percentage of students that took this assessment, that got a level three or four, went up overall as a state. That's not the number of students that met their learning gain target because that's something that we're still calculating. But just overall, the the percentage of students that met that threshold. So I think there's a lot to celebrate there and there's a lot of testament that as teachers are getting better at understanding this the standards. They're getting better at implementing high quality instruction materials, stronger accelerated pathways, improving um support for our lowest quartile. We're starting to see some positive trends overall. So when we share this data with districts, things that we ask them is. Is your district seeing the same results as the state? Are you above it? Are you below it? Let's start unpacking. And this is why it's important to get this data to schools so that they can make some data informed decisions.
Is there a comparison, Jacob, to the last couple of years of ACT Aspire? And how, what whatever number was proficient?
Yeah.
In those couple of years?
That's a great question. And um I don't know if we're able to do that maybe proficient level. Because we had to do an equal percentile linking for learning gains to ACT Aspire. Because one of the first goals that we wanted to ask is, are our students at least where they were pre pandemic level? Or worse off or above? Well, remember last year, I said, today is a new day, right? We're setting a new baseline when we define proficiency. And we started with that mindset in place. So this is building on year two. When we do the learning gains data, I think we can do that, to try to look at the percentage of students making learning gains. And see how far back we can go because we want to get that snapshot to pre pandemic level to see if if we we've gotten to where we were. I I know um my first year here, when we got the ACT Aspire data, we had a lot of improvement, but we were still below pre pandemic level. We we need learns. We need to keep supporting learns. We need to keep our foot on the gas with implementation. Because we're starting to see trend lines where things are going in the right direction.
It just seems to me, from from my memory of a couple of years ago. The last few ACT Aspire results were roughly the same. The 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 range that you wanted students to, their achievement to be in was in the, if I remember correctly, in somewhere in between thirty and thirty five percent statewide. And so it it seems like Atlas is measuring. Something consistent with what we were seeing.
Yeah. Yeah, and I and I would commend the state of where they set those cut scores on ACT Aspire. Because the the state did have high cut scores. So we wanted to maintain that through um Atlas. What what I think is is a is a good reminder is that ACT Aspire was a college and career readiness assessment. It wasn't a criterion reference assessment. So these test items are getting, are the students that these test items are measured against is the standards we expect them to learn. It's not a predictor. So when we use um a fourth grader was proficient in reading. Basically, what they were saying is that they were on track by tenth grade to get, I want to say it was an eighteen uh on the ACT. Which was a predictor in college that if they took a freshman course, the likelihood of getting an A or a B was over ninety percent. It didn't tell you whether or not you could do third grade math. It just said, well, it looks like you're on a trend. And I think that was why when we were rebuilding a new system, we want to use criteria. And we want to build it around a blueprint that teachers have access to. Because we we asked teachers when we were building out this assessment thing, what what is important to you that we can get better? One that we heard very clear is that they want a blueprint so that they know what's on the assessment. Well, we didn't have that with ACT Aspire. They want to have progress monitoring at the standard level so they can see which students are getting it and which ones aren't. We didn't have that with the ACT Aspire. We were able to build a system that is unique to the state that starts now kindergarten through high school. And this this assessment, the summer assessment is three through ten. But this past year, we will implement a kindergarten through high school. And our K three literacy assessment, it includes a dyslexia screener that leads to different test lists that teachers can administer. To get more information on student performance. And in fact, we even tested with a handful of VPK sites, um the Atlas, so that we can see if we can bring it down to pre K. So that's a little bit trickier. Lee's shaking her head yes, so.
Kindergarten was tricky as well.
Kindergarten was a little, we had, we we, there's been growing pains. I'm not gonna uh deny it. So we we, even when we started with kindergarten last fall, we we heard from the field real quick, we need to improve this. And we were able to do that throughout the winter and have a much better assessment through the spring. And we're navigating in the early learning space. And I think even throughout this year, we're gonna have some more people to be on board so that it's 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 aligned. And it's not confusing. And it's easy for teachers to understand. It's easy for parents to understand. And it's not a mystery. Uh one of the things I think that was really important that we heard from the field was that uh we want to go back to end of course exams. Like in our tested content area. And I'm gonna talk about why we're getting the results that we're getting. Because we would, I I would like to say we were really good at putting teachers in a moral dilemma, right? If you're in high school, like so if I was a a ninth grade algebra teacher, and I'm making that up. And I'm being told I have to teach algebra. I I know the content of algebra. I know what what those students need to be ready for geometry and algebra two and go on beyond. But the assessment I give is ninth grade math. And it doesn't measure algebra, but that's the assessment that tells the community whether or not our schools are doing well. Do I teach to an assessment? Or do I teach the subject that these kids need? We did that with biology. We we would put a a kid in ninth grade biology and say. Well, here's a grade level assessment that's made up of fiscal science, earth science, and life science. Or the teacher should just teach life science. But I'm getting evaluated on my student performance. And we're not measuring the courses that the kids are in. So yes, it's it's a great observation. We have not arrived, but we had to set that bar. And we set that bar high because we know our kids can do it. And I have full confidence that our schools are gonna continue to administer this and get that out. I don't know if that helps clarify.
No, it does.
Ms. Keener, did you want to jump in there or did I?
No, that was perfect. That was, my point was, it's hard to compare the two when one is based on standards that are available to teachers. And the other wasn't. You said that perfectly.
So. And and I told you like next year, this timeline is gonna get even more accelerated. But some of the things that we're tasked to do is is we've built out a new accountability system. And if you remember, um for the last school year, the accountability system, we released a district simulated grades. Because it was a new assessment. It was like, I don't know, March, maybe when we got the simulated grades out, which meant there was only like two months left to school. So we 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 knew that these systems were delayed. So now that um we have the achievement data, we're working on learning gains. We should have that hopefully completed. Those folks are doing that sometime in August. So maybe by the August board meeting, if um if we have time or have that data available, we'll be able to do an update. And then once those learning gains and um achievement levels have all been verified and codified, we'll be able to use that data to implement into our school grades. And then we'll be able to run district grades. This is something that we're needed to do. So uh we we haven't arrived, but we feel pretty confident throughout this fall. This past year data, I would just say, I guess it would be the twenty four, twenty five year school data and information will be complete. And then um we're gonna have more information for students uh and and teachers and leaders a as we go through the school year. So in the in the K two space, uh we had to build out and we made some adjustments to our progress monitoring. So those folks are also going through standard settings. So that's gonna be a little bit later um throughout this year. That we'll see. But by next year, when the system is completely done and everything's defined, it's gonna really uh move much more expeditiously. So overall, uh in in ELA, uh we showed improvement over prior year, which is what you want to see in your trend lines moving forward. We had a couple of grade levels that stayed flat and some had a little bit of a decline in math. In the EOCs, um we showed uh an overall pretty much increase in all of our grade levels. Uh we had a couple that stayed flat and declined, including in science, um pretty much the same trend. So I I think there's a lot to celebrate here because we're seeing our scores move more to that proficient level. And that's what we want to see. We want to see more students in proficient and advanced. We want to see less students in level one. Are we declining that and moving more students into into two if they are one? And then moving twos into threes and threes into fours?
Hey, Jacob, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
So um whenever I read this, uh when it says except grade nine, I mean, that's not following cohorts. That is just ninth grade last year, ninth grade this year.
Correct. And I'm gonna show a little bit of cohort data, but that that's a, that's a, that's why it's hard to compare over prior year. Because you're just looking at the percentage.
Right. It's not the same student.
Proficiency. And when we get the learning gains, I think that tells a little bit more powerful story because then we can look at each and each student at individual level. Did they meet their learning growth target? So this is just overall proficiency scores. So in ELA, oh. In math, we had some gains in our end of course exams, and I'll show that too. So um. So I think some pretty significant gains in our end of course exams, which shows that we're getting away from teaching grade level math and actually teaching the content that kids are in. So if you look at ELA, this is all of the grades three through ten. And you can see there's some differences between what's in, I would say it's like the orange shade, the light green, the dark green, and the in the blue. The orange shade is the students that are at that lowest level that we know need the most support. So that's a bar we want to see get smaller. And then the blue and the dark green is a bar that we want to see get bigger. So you can see when we say overall, as Mr. Woods pointed out, it's about thirty percent, you know, between thirty, thirty five percent of our students are hitting that three and four level. That was pretty consistent with what we saw with ACT Aspire. So we we've set that foundation in our intention is to continue to see that it it increase and improve as well. If you look at math, you'll see um this trend is pretty consistent in that go, whoops, I think I hit that twice. There we go. If you look at math, you can see there's a little bit of nuances moving up and down. But the big buckets I tend to hone in on on the far right are those algebra and geometry scores. Because that was a big change to what our expectations were in schools. And when we set that baseline, like that was hard for us to come out and say, we have to be honest, but when eighteen percent of our kids pass geometry, right? That means they're not being set up to be successful on higher level math. And then if they do try to go to college or university, are those students having to be put in remedial math? Because those courses um weren't be hitting the mastery level that you can see. So you can still see there is a lot of work to do in our end of course exams, a lot of work to do overall the state. But moving the trend lines in the right direction shows slow and steady progress. Science was actually pretty much across all of the grade levels fairly consistent with the level ones, twos, threes, and fours. And even floating into biology, which I think is a little bit encouraging, that the foundation that kids were getting in three through eight are preparing them to be a little bit more successful on that biologin of course exam. Because that's a little bit different distribution between one, two, three, and four that we see with geometry, uh for example. But thi- this is probably of all the charts, the one I like the most because it it's pretty much shows all the subject areas. Um you can see like that first quadrant's ELA, the second one's math, the third one's science. If you look at the green, that's um twenty three, twenty four, and the blue, twenty four, twenty five. And then you can see what was that percent different, right? So it's hard to match a cohort year over year, but you kind of slide down and I like to kind of pick out and hone in a couple of things. But like if you look at that fifth grade cohort, and you can see that pretty much they stayed flat on the students. Um scoring over the prior year cohort at that three and above. And a little bit of a decline in math and then a little bit of an increase in science. That's a cohort I think a lot of us are interested in because that was the cohort that um was impacted by the pandemic the most in kindergarten. Because we closed schools and took away the opportunity for students to learn. But then interestingly enough, if you look at that fourth grade cohort, where you see pretty significant gains in ELA. Pretty significant gains in math and pretty significant gains in science. Those were the students that started kindergarten being over quarantined and masked, right? So when we look back at all the interventions that we're doing with literacy coaches, high impact tutoring. Um making sure we're getting those gaps filled for those two cohorts, like especially that we know probably had the greatest impact, which would have been our fourth and fifth graders. I think there's a lot of story there to tell us that we're seeing those investments starting to pay off. And then you can see kind of the distribution over time. Um but when I look at algebra and geometry, you can see that algebra had about a four percent increase. And in geometry, a three and a half percent increase, which is significant. And I and I want to say that we calculated, and every grade level is a little bit different depending on the students. But each point um of improvement was about three hundred students. So when you start seeing four percent increase, that's like twelve hundred students statewide passed algebra this year that didn't pass last year. So to try to put it in the context, when you see numbers like that, that's a lot more students being on 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 target to be ready to be successful. But if you remember, we spent a lot of time talking about access and building out Math Path and pushing acceleration. Why aren't students getting access to high school credit and middle school? Why aren't we getting students into concurrent credit? We've lifted a lot of those barriers. When you look at students that are put in accelerated environments. When you look at students that are put in accelerated environments when they're ready. This is a pretty interesting chart because you can see that when you look at the percentage of eighth graders that took algebra. It was about sixty-seven percent of them in eighth grade met proficiency. When you look at algebra students that waited until ninth grade, it was twenty percent. Right, these kids can do it, we need to make sure that our systems are supporting an accelerated pathway. Because they're able to do it, if we can get them the right tools, the right resources, the right learning environment, we're seeing great things. Even students that were, say, super accelerated and took geometry in eighth grade, which typically a normal path or typical path we see is a geometry student in tenth grade. They're they're at a eighty-nine percent pass rate. So we have kids that can do algebra in seventh grade and geometry in eighth grade, those are the questions I'd be asking as parents and and if I'm seeing in my progress monitoring data. And I I challenge the team all the time, like we're going to have kids walk into school in August and in fourth grade get the highest score they can get in math, what does that school year look like for that kid? What is that pathway, what is that accelerator opportunity? Does our course progression lead us so that kids can start taking algebra in seventh grade or or eighth grade and in geometry in seventh grade or most most probably geometry in eighth grade? Because those are the tickets to getting an I B diploma, becoming an A P scholar. If you're not taking accelerated math in middle school, it's really hard to become, to be ready for A P Calc B C unless you're taking double core content math while in high school. So let's build out an accelerated path that starts at elementary school, identify these students and push them. Ms. Wilcoxen, this is what you're going to be doing this year, we're adding another bullet?
I just want to say, you know, even this past year, some of my fourth graders were performing at the eighth and ninth grade math level in my classroom.
They're ready.
Some of their end of the year scores were eighth and ninth grade math, so this is, I love this.
Right, and and thi- this goes back to what we've been doing with learns and accesses, we're building a system that's going to identify student and determine whether they're ready to get pushed in accelerated pathway, are they on the right pathway for layers of support? Or do they need additional intervention and support? We don't want to wait till the summer to say, oh man, we should have gave, you know, little Randy some extra opportunities or Mr. Ken some extra support, like. We're going to have this data in real time and then teachers can build out their own progress monitoring as needed. And we're going to make informed decisions and I am confident that we're going to see rapid growth and improvement on these assessment scores year after year.
Do you also track a a group of students as they go through school? So i- if you, in fact, if you go back, do you, can you go back, uh, yeah, that one right there?
Yeah, this one's fascinating.
If you, if you look at the twenty twenty-three, look in under math. Uh, if you go down the the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And there was one that caught my eye, um, okay, look at the seventh graders in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year math, thirty-seven point eight percent. But then as eighth graders, the next year, thirty-one point seven percent. So that group of students went down, you know, six point one percent. Do do we tear that data apart and say, what happened to this group of kids when they went from seventh grade to eighth grade?
No, it it, you're you're thinking in the right manner and tha- and that's that's exactly what we need to do. And and that's why this is, this is good data to start with the percentage of students meeting proficiency, because I, the the other question is, is even though proficiency, let's say for that cohort in seventh grade to eighth grade, that eighth grade assessment may have been higher. And we saw a growth over prior years, but some of those kids made it to algebra and we see a huge growth in eighth grade algebra, which is hopefully, you know, where it is. So that's why this chart may not be the best one, but when we get those learning gains charts, I think that tells us a little bit better story because now you're tracking. Are the kids making their gains, because I think you're going to see less kids taking grade, eighth grade pre-algebra if they're ready for algebra. Because we've been pushing that as a state, so hopefully, I think like that next column I would ask is what was those number of students tested? Because like if there was five hundred in seventh grade and it went to two fifty in eighth grade, where did those two fifty go? Well, they went to algebra and then our algebra scores increased four percent, right? So, yes, we we have to track that data and there's a lot to unpack here, but we, like this, thi- this is like when, you know, like our getting ready for the Super Bowl, I feel like we're in the playoffs. And we're, we we just finished the first game and as these next rounds of data is coming in, we're going to be the Super Bowl and and the data nerds of the world, this is what we live for. Because we're going to really just start asking those questions, so, but you're spot on.
Dr. Arnold, what do you guys think?
Look, just one comment and that is, um, could I, I'm really pleased that we're focusing on levels three and four. Other states might focus on two or one, all levels need to be a study and learned from. But the fact that our um, lift is on three and four is really important. The, so just because of the microphone, I can repeat, just to focus on level three and four is a philosophy statement, it's really a paradigm shift. Other districts, other states might be looking at to one and two. All levels should be scrutinized and and understood, but the fact that we're having that that draft upwards and focusing on the top learners is really important for the whole system.
And I and and I appreciate that and tha- and that's been something I I think most superintendents and leaders would echo that I've been saying that from day one. We've done a really good job at as a state at focusing on the bottom. And I think that's why it's important to have assessment systems like this, because when when we would tell a teacher. You know, in third grade, thirty-five percent of your students are proficient. Right, but you don't know what that means on an A C T aspire. They look at it as like, well, that means sixty-five percent of them aren't, so who do they teach to? Right, so if your entire class is around remediation and teaching to the bottom, you're holding our best students back. We're now able to give affirmation by standard, by student with clear and concise language to say, I know how to target the students that need intervention.
Yeah.
But also know how to make sure that every student gets access to grade level instruction every day and the kids that need to be accelerated, we can't hold them back. And I and I tell them all the time, we can love our students to mediocrity, but that's not our goal, we have to push them to excellence. And that is what we're going to continue to do with this data and in this school year. And when I, what I love about access is the focus is on acceleration, our school grade accountability system is going to look at the percentage of students grow- graduating with merit and distinction. That's a big deal because we're, we have a system that's going to recognize excellence in pushing and accelerating students. Our students can do this, I don't ever want to hear that a zip code is going to define somebody's outcome. Or that I don't understand the family lives and what these students have to go through challenge. Students will meet the expectations that we set and we need to set high expectations.
Yeah, so it's not really a paradigm shift as much as a paradigm expansion. And oftentimes, three and four were overlooked or just uh, taken for granted and now they're a focal point that will really improve the whole system, so I really thank you for that.
I really love this approach, um, you know, it's it's hard not to think about higher higher education. And uh, not think about Commissioner Warren, Warren and his uh, access lab program. Uh, that team should be jumping for joy right now because this program does a lot of that heavy lifting for them.
So you have a classroom now with a mixture of levels in it.
Sure.
Okay, that that, so that teacher is responsible for handling or trying to get the lower levels up. Is is there ever going to be a separation of or concentration of you put the lower levels in a in a group so they can receive consistent instruction or?
So I think that's going to look different depending on the school and the students and and the type of needs that they have. And and that's why I go back to a one size fits all approach doesn't work and meet the needs of all students. But I think you you would see in higher grades, um, standard courses like chemistry and chemistry honors. Maybe different because honors may have extra standards and more more rigor. So students that are going to be maybe on advanced aptitude track or accelerated track may be taking some honors. But at the end of the day, every kid deserves access to grade level instruction, right? So what what we have to do as a state is define, what is high quality tier one instruction look like for all students in that grade level? And then what is tier two, tier three intervention and support look for those those students that need it? And what is accelerated opportunities look for those students that need it, so I think a lot of times, and Ms. Wilcoxen could probably speak this better. That's why you see like in elementary, if that's where you're honing in, a lot of teachers team teach, right? And so that they may um, come together to do that tier one instruction, but then one teacher may pull and do little targeted interventions while another teacher may do more advanced or more enrichment and and you start seeing that classroom not just be under one teacher, but you see it kind of under a team of teachers that are taking a team approach. Is that, do you want to expand on that, Ms. Wilcoxen, or, I don't want to put you on the spot?
So we have done that approach in the past, um, each year it kind of varies with, um, I guess the district's policies and things. But I have seen it to where different kids go to different teachers for different levels of intervention and support. And um, you you know, usually we rely on those teachers where their expertise falls, you know, in the best area that suits the different levels of the kids.
And and this is why I hone in on, every child gets access to grade level instruction in every subject, each and every day in the day. And there's been some national studies done, they could be replicated here. And and what they will tell you is that eighty percent of students will get A's and B's on the assignments we give them. Right, like I can walk into any school and walk in any teacher's grade book and find that eighty percent of students are going to get A's and B's. But like twenty percent of the time, the assignment's on grade level. So if we can talk about what are we asking kids to do, can we give them grade level assignments? That's how you start meeting those expectations and we start, when you're able to do that, you see that bottom accelerate at a rapid pace.
Did it, you did great. All right, any other questions? Okay, then I do think we have public comments. Um, I will remind all of our commentators, we have three minutes and I like rules, so I might be a little more um, strict on the three minute timeline than my predecessors. And I just wanted to be clear because that's kind, so our first up would be Mr. Julius Wright.
Dr. Anderson is not the first.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I was just going down the list, so Dr. Anderson?
Good morning, everybody, good morning to the Arkansas State School Board and to everybody that's present. My name is Dr. Andrew Nan Anderson-Guac, I am a Pine Bluff stakeholder. Uh, and I'd like to read a letter to you. This is from the City of Pine Bluff, the Office of the Mayor, Vivian L. Flowers. Dear Secretary Jacob Olivia. As mayor of the City of Pine Bluff and as a staunch advocate for public education. I write to express my full and unwavering support for the election of all seven members of the Pine Bluff School District Board. In accordance with House Bill seventeen twenty-four and consistent with the framework set forth in Act six thirty-three of twenty seventeen. In twenty seventeen, while serving in the Arkansas House of Representatives. I joined Senator Clark Tucker as sponsor of Act six thirty-three to define a framework toward ensuring that school districts released from state control will elect school board members to reflect the will, voice and best interests of the voters and their communities. The Pine Bluff School District was subsequently released from state control, yet only one of seven members currently serving on the Pine Bluff School District Board has been elected by the people to date. This lack of representative governance continues to deny our community a democratically elected school board versus one appointed by the state. While a board, um, they might have elected last year could have been the very one currently shaping the policies, priorities and future of our public schools, it is not. It is essential that all the members of the board be selected through a democratic process that reflects the will of the voters instead of the government appointees and employees from a previous administration. Further, Act six thirty-three of twenty seventeen laid the groundwork by requiring that within two years of the state assuming control of a school district. The Arkansas State Board of Education must define the conditions for returning the district to local governance. H B seventeen twenty-four builds on that by providing the clear and necessary mechanism to fully restore democratic control through the election of all seven school board members. This moment is not just about compliance with legislation, it's about restoring public trust, empowering our citizens and reaffirming that the future of Pine Bluff's uh, school district should be shaped by Pine Bluff. A fully elected school board is a critical step in strengthening transparency, accountability and local investment in the success of our students and educators. I urge the Arkansas Department of Education, the State Board of Education and all relevant decision makers to take swift action in alignment with both Act six thirty-three and H B seventeen twenty-four and allow for the full election of all seven members of the Pine Bluff School District Board.
Thank you, Dr. Guac.
Without delay, our children, our schools and our depart.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wright.
Good morning to all the board members. I would like to read a letter. And it says, Dear Secretary Olivia. I am Jean McKissick, a nineteen sixty-nine graduate of Pine Bluff High School and a long life resident of Pine Bluff. I am aware that Pine Bluff School District has satisfied its requirements of the annexation governance of an appointed limited board during state control. I fully support the Pine Bluff School District exercising its right of an election of all seven board of directors according to Act six three-three and recent legislation, House Bill one seven two-four. Consistent with Helena, West Helena, Palassee County Special and Rularock District in March the third, twenty twenty-six. Please accept my apology for not appearing in person, but a ten day previous scheduled event necessitated my absence. I would appreciate your permitting my letter in support of the election of all board members to be read and considered, thank you.
Thank you, please extend our thanks as well, Ms. Wright.
Good morning. I, well, you all know that I'm Charlene Wright, the faithful concerned stakeholder of the Pine Bluff School District. I first would like to thank Dr. Cedric Rice and the appointed limited board that was appointed during the annexation. But we as concerned stakeholders are petitioning again to hold an emergency meeting prior to the August thirteenth date to begin circulating petitions for the March third, twenty twenty-six election. We have also circulated petitions within the district in support of an election of all seven board members. Due to the current legislation in which substantiate Act six three-three, it says it requires an entire school district board of directors to be elected during the first board meeting after a school district returns from state to local control. This was said before, but there was confusion, some could not comprehend, like they say with the kids, with the athlete's test comprehension. But in this law, it states that it requires not optional, not for continuity, that a democratically elected board should be elected. We're not asking for anything special, no five oh four plan, we're just asking for our right of a democratically elected board. We did the requirements to be released and all we're saying after the release, the law says that we should have a democratic elected board, there's been twenty twenty-three, it could have been done. Twenty twenty-four, it could have been done. Please does not allow another miscarriage of justice in March of twenty twenty-six that we be denied a democratic elected board. It was very, I'm gonna say this in closing, it was very disheartening to hear at a July board meeting. It was asked by board member Henderson. It was asked by board member Henderson, was Pine Bluff turned over, taken over because of academics? He said it twice and I really was like, why is he saying this twice? And final, at both times, Secretary Stacy Smith, Deputy Secretary, said no. And then she said, because the superintendent asked that we be taken over. I don't think that we, please don't deny us our election. We're not asking for anything special. Give us our opportunity to elect board of directors that we want on our board. And if the others want to run, they can rerun again.
Thank you.
Dr. Cedric Rice can run again.
Mary, do we have anybody else set up for public comment?
Do you have anything new to say or is it more of the three, of the, from the three people we've heard perhaps as a question? As a counter.
Oh, okay then, all right. What'd you say? Go ahead. Can you go ahead and say your name in the microphone?
Uh, Cedric Rice, citizen of Pine Bluff, also Chair of the Pine Bluff School District Board of Directors. I wanna thank you, Secretary Leva and the board for this opportunity. What I wanna say is, I appreciate the sentiments of my, uh, fellow city members, but we have to look at the big picture. The Pine Bluff School District is on the right track. We have a great superintendent, we have a great board. And I think some of this is veiled in attempt of disruption, right? We're moving forward, we're making progress. And we have some of our community members that are, are just hell bent on disrupting that process. And so I'm here just to support what we're trying to do. It was a good move to appoint us. And I often joke and say, you, you, you're appointed, but we're really anointed. Cause I don't know if people understand what it's like to serve on a board, but it is hard work. So I'm here to support the district, support our efforts, support our board. And we really want that consistency as we talked about when we regained state control. Re-electing all seven board members doesn't give us the consistency we need. Because at the end of the day, it's about student success, student success. We understand constitutionality, we understand democracy, but at the end of the day, it's about student success. So I wanted to just add that as a counter. And I think, if I was saying, I think something was misspoken. We had two of our board members that were actually re-elected, not one. One ran unopposed and one won, uh, straight out. And I think that, that board member, uh, won and beat Ms. Wright. So I just wanted to say I'm excited to be here, excited to continue to serve in this capacity. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
I have some things I'd like to bring up. And I think, uh, it, it piggybacks off of the discussion we had earlier with the data that, um, we kinda unpacked a little bit today. I was wondering, everyone on this board has heard me harp on, uh, efforts that we might can make to make school days in May more meaningful. Um, and I was wondering if maybe at our next board meeting, if we could have a presentation from the department regarding the idea of moving the assessment window from April to May, beginning with this school year. What, what would the pros and cons be of that and whatever? But I, I would love to have a public discussion about that idea. And, and the reason that I think it, urgency to go ahead and have that conversation is cause I think a lot of planning has to go into, you know, having that assessment. And I, I think that August is probably better than November, December, January discussing that.
Yeah, happy to. And we've actually began starting having some of those conversations with our folks. So would, we can just add a set, it may, it may be beneficial to just add it like maybe a little bullet or session just over the testing calendar window. So we can just go over all of the assessment windows with the progress monitoring. But I think we can achieve what you're looking at.
Yeah.
Because now that the system's built, it's, it's working a lot more efficiently. I think we can reduce that window and push it back further in May and it won't hurt any of our timelines. So we'd be happy to do that.
Okay, well, I'd, I'd love to have that discussion. Another thing, um, related to education freedom accounts. I was wondering, does the department do any kind of audit of tuition rates at private schools? Uh, the tuition rates that were being charged prior to schools receiving education freedom account funds versus what, uh, private schools may be charging in this upcoming twenty-five, twenty-six school year? Is that data that, that is collected by the department?
I mean, I can speak to that and then I think Dr. Smith. Um, so I've, I've talked to Daryl a lot about tuition rates. So yes, it's my understanding, we've been collecting them for the last three years. And I know that there's a lot more that we can talk about. But we've kind of set a cap on what we consider to be reasonable. And it is the job of our board to determine if something is unreasonable, if it exceeds that cap. I'm sure Daryl could probably pull more information. Do you wanna talk about it or am I doing okay? Okay.
Well, I wasn't necessarily asking for it today. I don't wanna put anybody, you know, on a one minute spot. But I, I would love to hear a report about that, what, what trends we see.
I, I can.
Are there any schools that are setting off alarms with regard to how they're?
So I do know especially for this last year, um, just a couple of schools that I have talked to, increasing teacher salary was a big hurdle for them to overcome because they're competing with public schools. And so they're, to put a cap on how much they can increase, that they're also trying at the same time to compete on teacher salary was difficult. And so I know he's had lots and lots of conversations to say, hey, in the future, and I'm just making up numbers here, a fifteen percent raise might be okay this year because you're trying to get teacher salaries to that point. But going forward, that's probably gonna be considered unreasonable. Or at least we'll have to go before the state board for them to decide that. I mean, I've talked to several schools across, there's some people trying to set up, um, like special needs type programs within their school that might require a higher raise. It's probably something we would consider reasonable. Um, but yes, I do know they are monitoring that because the whole point of learns is to afford more people the option to be able to go. And if all we're doing is having schools raise their prices thirty percent, then that just takes people out of it.
Yeah, right. Well, is that data we can hear in a, in an upcoming meeting?
We can definitely pull that.
And then I wonder, do we gather end of year assessment scores from private schools?
Yes.
And is that, uh, is, is that a presentation we could hear about? How, how, I, I, I don't know that the results of their assessments mirror or match or can be easily compared to the Atlas, uh, assessment? I don't know, but I would love to hear about that and just see what the, what the data shows among the private schools.
We, we have, we're required to publish an annual report with all that information. Last year was the first year we aggregated a lot of that data. So we learned a little bit about maybe asking better questions to get better data. So that's more reportable, but we, when, when that process is complete, I don't know if that's been fully compiled yet. We can definitely do an update on that to do an analysis.
Also just to give you some less heartburn, that's a requirement to be a part of EFA because they have to return in those. If they're not, then they don't get to participate in the funds.
Good.
Anything else?
Yeah, well, I have a question about Bliville. I wanted to check in on, um, that school district. I know at last meeting, the students were not registered, the teachers didn't have contracts. I was just hoping for an update as we're getting really close to the start of the year.
So yes, and, um, we, we, we're hoping to do a full Bliville update today, but it's probably be a deeper, better update if we do it in the August first meeting now. But the short story, and, and Mr. Henderson may give you better information cause he, he's been pretty busy up in that region as well, is we had a lot of concern and we asked the board to take some official action. Since then, we named Brett Minor, somebody from our school improvement team, to be the acting superintendent to start going through and answering all those questions and getting some board policies up to date. We've had folks from our s- school improvement team onsite, boots on the ground every single day since our board member in Bliville. And we've, uh, learned a lot about teacher contracts, things that were promised to people, but it wasn't approved. People getting paid random numbers that wanna know why they're getting a pay cut. At, at the end of the day, we've got everything sorted so that everybody's on a contract, classified staff, teaching staff, hiring decisions made, working with families on enrollment, working on building out master schedules. But then we've also, in the meantime, we were tasked with putting out an external operator, um, proposal. And we put that out, I think we had about eight people respond. That was reviewed internally and determined about four of the candidates qualified. We put together a community forum to come in and have these, um, prospective external operators come in and present what would be their role and vision and what it would look like to, um, help maintain the day-to-day operations of those schools, what would that timeline be? Um, the task force has gone through that and has made a recommendation wherein kind of negotiations with solidifying a contract with that organization and, and ironing out those details, which is why I'm saying we'll be able to bring a lot of this back to our board. But I think a lot of, to answer your questions, I think a lot of our real urgent things, like we gotta address this today. We've, we've got some systems in place. Um, now we, we have also inherited a, a pipe burst at the middle school that needs extensive reinvent renovations. We've, we've inherited some facility things that, um, we weren't planning on through this transition. But, um, our transportation folks, our facility folks, our school improvement team, our finance team, we, we actually, um, have found they haven't audited their books in some times. So we've asked the Bureau of Legislative Research, I, I think that's the agency that does it to do a formal audit. So we're bringing in those folks so that we can get a better handle on the state of their finances, the state of their academics, the state of their facilities and move forward. Mr. Henderson, I don't know if you wanna add to that?
No, you, you pretty much hit every element. I think, uh, the one thing that I'd like to point out, you know, about the committee that was put together, uh, very, very, whoever was involved with that, very, very good job. Uh, I mean, you had faith-based, you had, uh, nonprofit, you had, uh, private sector. Uh, very, very diverse group. And, uh, and since the, 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 the committee did a really good job, in my opinion, of, you know, just the whole entire program. So I think, uh, more to come.
So if, if, we would love to do a deep update at the next board meeting, if that's okay. Cause I, I think we'll have a lot more specific information.
That's great. My understanding is the interim superintendent was involved prior to our meeting there. So he's familiar with the district, familiar with the community and that's, um, that's wonderful. And I'm glad, um, I hate that, that the facilities are, um, that we're having to respond, put out fire in a totally different way. But I'm so glad that it is this team that's there to tackle such, um, an event.
Well, if, if there is a recurring theme between the work groups, the, the folks that are working there, the employees, the students, is they love that community and want what's best for their schools and will do whatever it takes to make that happen. So there, there's just, when, when, when we were going through this takeover, I, I remember meeting with a lot of, I met with every employee that was still there through the summer and we had them coming in groups. And, um, you can sense it from the employees there too, like there, there's something special starting to happen in that community to rally around support for students. And, um, we look forward to doing a great update.
Great, thank you.
Okay, well, if there's nothing else, I need a motion to adjourn.
Move adjourn?
Second? Second by Mr. Bragg, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.